All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Table one, the one from Tetra.
Then I'd like, yeah. Do I need to make a?
Yeah, I make a motion for that.
Okay, I make a motion on table. From Tetra.
In the section.
In.
Give the legal.
Starting in section 21 of. In the water line, starting in section 21, township 26, range 13, ending in section 19, township 26, range 13.
I'll second that.
Thank you. That would do it off there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we start these your way or any?
Yeah, have you signed all of them?
Yep. Okay, now we'll just table.
Table.
I want to get a number off that, you know, call that guy and see what.
Oh, okay. Yo, let's just keep it out here.
Okay.
And I think this thing.
Is this mine or?
No, his, for you to sign.
Okay. Them's mine.
What I always do when you finish signing them, your last signature, fold them over closed and then, or do you need to sign all of them?
I have to sign all of them.
Okay, leave them open then.
All right. These are David's?
Yes.
Shelley, I'm gonna put David's, it's all signed, right there.
Okay, thank you.
It's all David's, right there.
Okay.
So them's all out of the way, right?
Yep.
All right.
You ready?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll just sign them.
Number seven, discussion, discussion and possible action regarding the following flood plane permit for Chesapeake. Foster's been looking at this and we're gonna take no action because he's still got some questions on it and need to be some more further, or you wanna tell us?
When I link this slightly, I wanna put this type, this drill set up, plank battery, and it's in the flood plane zone. And we need to discuss with the Chesapeake, but they need to put these tanks up on base elevation above the flood waters, so in case we have a flood, it'll be able to flood out of the water, so.
So when we, we get.
Where's this at?
Uh, it's north of Alba, Yuppie Park, and then make a correction line, go a mile west and go straight north two miles, it's up in the river.
On the salt port thing?
So for right now, I make a motion, we take no action.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Action, no action?
No action because don't know if it'll be.
I know, but you don't have to have.
Oh, okay.
It's no action, then we don't.
All right. Number eight, discussion and possible action regarding inventory resolution from District One and District Three, junking a radio copier, ice machine and chair.
That's the ones we surplused.
Yes.
Yeah, last week.
And I'm so happy we're doing it in order.
Okay, do I need to make a motion in this? I move that we, uh, jump the inventory of District One through radio copier, ice machine and chair. I make that, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number nine, discussion and possible action regarding inventory resolution for District One to surplus a belly dump trailer.
There it is.
I make the motion to, uh, to, uh, surplus the belly dump trailer for District One.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 10, discussion and possible action regarding inventory resolution for the trailer to supply a closer printer. Okay. That's, uh.
I'm just gonna stack it on there, David.
Just enter copier, serial number is J-92563004201, or double two. Uh, so I'll make the motion.
What's the ring on it?
The what?
The ring.
I don't know, I can't pronounce it right.
Is that how you say gestner?
Oh, it's Steppner.
It's Steppner.
See, I've never knew that.
Neither, that's why I just kinda fumbled through it. I'll make that motion.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 10 carried. Number 11, discussion, possible action regarding inventory resolution for District Three transferring a printer to the city of Winoka.
I make the motion, we transfer that to the city of Winoka.
Okay.
Color copier.
I second it.
This she, John signs, and then all of you sign that one.
And that's a Dell laser printer.
Yeah, okay.
And.
I can pronounce that one.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I was, motion, 11 carried.
Now, do I need to sign down here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
You need to sign both ways, there and then up there.
Discussion, possible action regarding appointment of John Smiley to the OEDA board. I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Where's that at? Yugoslavia?
Beaver. 12 carried. We're moving right on.
Does it say when?
I don't know.
Uh, they're, they're supposed to be like.
Will they contact me?
Yes, I'm gonna send them all your information, contact information, then they'll contact you back.
Okay. Discussion, possible action regarding appointment of David Hamilton to the Woods County Health Board of Trustees. I'll make a motion for that, too.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and yet, we have, let's see, I have this for you, two of those to sign, not for you, Ellen.
So where's yours at? Right here handy?
Yeah.
Sure it is.
Imagine that.
Twice a year.
I'll leave. I guess you guys got age on me.
Sign these two, right there on top. Or the first line. And then you also sign these two.
You got ready for some water, David?
Okay, number 14, discussion, possible action regarding appointment of, on the E-911 Board Trustees for Woods County to finish out Clint Strong's term.
Okay, what do we, what do we need to do on that, Randy? Is one of us dead?
You wanna discuss it, or you want, whatever you do it, or how, well, it doesn't matter to me.
Is that the?
That's the board with Grant County and Woods County combined.
I, I don't mind doing it if you don't.
Okay, I'll make the motion, we point David to finish Clint's term.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need to sign anything on that? Okay. There, it's just an advisory board. They have, they spend no money, it's just. Discussion, possi, number 15, discussion, possible action regarding appointment of Randy Murphy to the Woods County Industrial Development Authority Board.
I move that we appoint Randy Murphy to Industrial Development Authority Board. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye. That's probably another one of them handy ones, right?
Yeah. Discussion, possible action regarding detention transportation claim of $226.88. And that's just, uh, where we reimburse the, for the detention center and, or we pay for it and they reimburse us?
And that's just to get our reimbursement.
Okay. Make a motion, we accept that, or whatever.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you are the only one that signs, you sign here, and then on the second page you sign here.
As the contractor?
Mm-hmm.
17, approve, disapprove monthly reports for the Health Department. I make a motion, we approve it.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There was an issue, it's $106. Okay, number 18, discussion, possible action regarding transfer appropriations from general government to general government E-911. And this is just a standard deal, we have to, uh, move money around.
Fund, funding.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we transfer that funding.
Okay.
A second.
Dollar amount on that, maybe.
Hundred thousand?
Hundred thousand we're gonna transfer to their account.
And?
Mainly for personal services.
All three of you sign at the top two places, and you're the one that signs here.
What is a DVD superdrive?
So you sign both places? I can't see that far down the spectrum.
Right. Both places up there, yep.
Acknowledgement of a proclamation of 34 years of service for Karen R. Brewster, O.S.U. Extension Agent. We're just, I think they're gonna honor the 29th here in the courthouse.
Yeah, from 4:30 to 5:30.
Okay. And we just, we're just, guess when it in a minute to, uh, and I think it's open to the public.
Mm-hmm, it is.
And sure, maybe I.
Yeah, that'd be easier, and I'll just stamp the back of this one.
You wanna look at that?
I still move. To do the proclamation for 100.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh-oh. Donnie's not on here.
He was on.
Well, did I miss him?
Oh, you're kidding me.
I, I just thought that I.
Donnie. I had you on here, and how you got off of here. Maybe, did I have him last week, and he wasn't here? Is that what I did?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, my gosh, I know I had you on here, Donnie. I don't know where it is.
What do we gotta do, Donnie? Can we talk about what you hear?
Yeah, we can, but we don't, I'm taking the action.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, so, uh, I don't know if we do it under new business or just, or shall we finish and then do it? Okay, you got the floor. New business, come on over. What this is, is a five-year plan, Lynn, that's drawn up, I mean, am I right, Donnie?
Yes, and it's for these, uh, they're planned to. The roads.
Roads, just, just.
And it's, uh, if these guys wanna proceed on, for they, I know everybody's got projects of their own they wanna do, probably, not the previous mission.
Well, that way we'll, just look at them and they can decide, and we won't take any action, but just, you can go over them with them, what, what they have.
And this is your CBRI 105, but that comes off of field taxes received to county every month. And it looks like we've been receiving about $30,000 a month, ten times three, 150,000. And the dollar figures I have were from about those late November dollars.
Okay.
And, uh, to start off with, unencumbered balance, District One at that time was 336405. Then District Two was 184858, District Three was 3,365. John's the winner. So, uh, we head down to, I talked to you about it some, we're going to construct Bridge number 174 and 175 using force account funds.
Okay.
This fund, and $100,000 each project on County Road 370. And so that would leave you with, after your income, that would leave you with 206,000.
206.
206, and that's just an estimated figure. Randy, I had you down for 200,000 chip seal.
Yeah.
And that would leave you with 54858. John, I had you down for, uh, EPR repayments on the EPR loan. And that loan would be paying $10,000 a month out of this fund and $10,000 a month out of your M and O.
Right.
That's for my alley in Blacktop.
Yes.
Chip and seal.
Yes. So that carries over to page three, which will be fiscal year 16. We have engineering, District One, which would be an STP bridge, circle number 173, and there's that. That bridge 173, David, is on 370, that's the longer bridge at the Ford, between east west six and eight.
Okay, yes, yeah.
So we'll do that one with federal funds.
Okay.
And then we have construct, uh, force account number 176, which that's the bridge the south mile of that project. This one here.
The very first bridge.
The very first.
Yeah, okay.
So you'll construct it next year, and then this summer will be the other two. District Two had 150, we had S and P construction of, uh, that bridge project 203, and then 150,000 chip and seal. District Three, we have engineering for crosstown beams, bridge number 83, and that is the East Bridge, Jack Weaver's house. And then, uh, number 255, and 255 is two and a quarter mile south of Craig Road on 500. That would be straight south of Tacoma, I believe. Then you still have your 80,000 EPR repayment. I think after you do the 70 this year, and then you continue to pay the 10 on it next year's fiscal year, you don't have to take any out of your M and O, the 80 one, unless you choose to.
So I have 80,000 on it?
It was, uh, I texted this morning, get some exact figures, and I think it was 250 to start off with, and I think we were down to around.
You know where you said on?
Right around 200, I don't know for sure, but I have to check.
Really? I think after this payment, we talked about it, 145 left, 140 or 145. This payment we just wrote was, had that addition.
Had that addition.
4,000 or something along.
2046.
That one was wrong, I thought it was 120 after this month.
Oh, okay.
120 after this month?
120, you mean, yeah.
Okay. So that means we would pay how many months?
We're halfway, we've paid six months.
You've paid six months on it, okay.
And we're taking 10.
This is the sixth month, and then we paid it June, I believe.
Okay, so if you own the 120, then you do that, so you won't have none for next year, so that eighty, so that eighty can change.
That's good, then, right?
So I'll check on that. And the, uh, and then in fiscal year 17, we have engineering, S and P bridge, circle number 21, 21 is around, so it's 370, and, uh, Noble, I believe, three quarter mile east to 370 and Noble, which would be, where does the river bridge is that? Right there next corner. Is the river here?
Oh, it's around the next corner.
Right there.
Well, Snare's Barn, yes, yeah, okay.
And then, uh, force account number 213, and I'll have to look and see where 213, I think 213 is bridge north of town here on Blacktop that I talked to you about, you just wanna check and see.
Yeah.
If you can get right away or not.
It's not relevant.
Okay, I thought that was his conversation before, so anyway, we got it for force account at 17.
That's at Crippen Mackey Bridge.
Oh.
And you got the beams in your yard.
The big beams.
The big beams in your yard for that. The, uh, District Two, we got the crosstown construction number 65, which is paid with state serve funds, and had you for 100,000 chip and seal. District Three, we're using state funds on crosstown beams, bridge number 2.8, that one is Craig Road and 281 Junction, two east and two and a quarter south.
Craig Road.
And 281, two east, two and a quarter south. So two-span concrete bridge. And we also have construction of the S and P bridge funds, which that's federal funds, and state for 253, A and that is, uh, straight south of Tacoma, 500, about half mile there, Glasses. And we have been going through this for several years, and we're back to Mr. Glass, and we're gonna go, no right of way, so we're gonna have to build it with him. I hope we can stay within existing, but we're at least gonna have to have temporary right one. We designed it once, and the type of bridge we had designed, it pushed water south, and probably through that barn, it didn't get into that house, but it pushed the water south, so we're designing a slab span bridge to reduce the height the road has to be raised up. So that's been a challenge there. And then, we got new fences that's been put up and stuff, there, so we're gonna have to, probably have to very minimal have temporary right one. Brandon, David, we got 2018, construct with federal and state funds, number 173, which that's the bridge from north on 370.
That's, that's the very north.
The very north bridge.
The big bridge.
No, big, not the big bridge, 7173.
Oh, this bridge?
This bridge, right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's 173, I put in the location out there. 7173?
Yeah. No, that's 7, yeah.
173.
Yeah, 7, yeah, you got 73, but, oh, it, yeah, it's 173.
Didn't have nothing down for District Two or Three, I didn't know that far out. 2019, we got to construct the bridge on Noble and 380, and a couple of force accounts for District Two, I'll just leave some numbers on it just a second. And, uh, then construct Bridge 83 and 255 for District Three, using state funds for crosstown beam. And John, he had engineer on north 242, 23.2. It's a low water crossing around, around four from the big concrete bridge. Was gonna use crosstown beams there, but you can look back and see if you wanna do anything there or not. I think it's on, uh, I think that's on the A Bar Road, the big bridge on A Bar Road around the corner.
Mm-hmm.
So you can look at that, see, but that's engineering 2019, so you should have plenty of time.
I like to get with you and go right around and.
Yeah, see what we got.
You could explain a little bit more of the F2 and what we need to do.
And those beams in your yard, you have 120 of them, is that right?
I think so.
And we'll be using, uh, 14 of them per bridge for these three bridges on 370, so we'll be using 42 of them for Bridge 174, 175, and 176, and David, there.
How many, there'd be 42 of them?
14 for bridge. Those bridges now, uh, are two spans.
14 each bridge?
14 each bridge. So we'll be using number two span, like 63, 45, and 63, those will all be new 100-foot, be two-span 50-footers.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be 100-foot bridges, 'cause we'll be raising those up about 10 foot above where they are now, probably cutting those heels.
And you'll have those planned for me?
Yes, tighter for draw plans.
Okay.
So that'll, that's your money. And then we get into this little printout here, which we discussed a little bit. Bridge, uh, 74, 175, 176, will be built using the county CBRI funds. 173 will be federal funds. And then we have a road project from east west seven to east west 10, which will be federal funds, three miles in between, that's reason David has to build those two bridges now, as we.
Okay, there's the three miles there.
And then you have the mile at the bottom, which will be a CRV project, it will be tied with the, starting that, where the sun bridge ends up at, uh, Bishop, where that bridge ends, we'll start there, and go south back to east west seven, and we'll do an exception on the bridge, but we're already gonna have the bridge built.
That'll be the big bridge, not the, not the ma, not the river bridge, but the other long span.
Yeah, the long span bridge, south.
Then this, this bridge here, this 73, that's just that little mini.
That is a three-span bridge now, and so that'll be a big concrete bridge, we'll go back.
Down, I guess, I lost on bridges.
It's about 150 foot long now.
Okay, then, what is?
That is, this one is 150 foot.
But what is, where's, I'm.
The river bridge is right there.
Here, okay, then you come back around the corner, I don't know there, there's not a bridge here.
Well, there's not a bridge there, the bridge right here. This project, the CRV.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm, I'm up with you, okay.
The CRV project will take in this mile, and then it will start here, and we'll lessen accept that bridge, 'cause we'll have it done.
Yeah.
So when they build that bridge, you'll have 800 foot of asphalt going each direction.
Okay.
We'll tie on with that asphalt, it'll south to the intersection, and then we'll tie on what you want to be very far south of that mile line, which it's a dead mile line, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right in there, wherever this bridge project ends, we'll go up around and tie on to the river bridge.
Okay. That's, okay, then we're not gonna come back south?
Yes, this will be an STP road project.
Okay, and it'll come south?
It'll come from here to here, twenty seventeen. This is ten, and this is...
Okay, where we're grounded all.
Yeah, where you're gonna be. So you're gonna have, uh, gonna be using your funds, federal funds, this is, this is gonna be a long drawn out mess, but it will start at the new bridge at Butches, and end that where the good asphalt there at Charlie's Corner.
So when do you anticipate the big bridge being started?
Randy, we'll use your copy for now. Put it on this one. You can take this one out.
Okay.
The, uh, big bridge will have to redesign, so it looks like...
Uh, yeah.
In fiscal year sixteen, I hope we can get there, it's gonna be pushing it, do the redesign, and so, and this, this is the state CRV and federal funds, this is what's imposed on this one. The little printout is just Woods Counties, and the bigger printout, the one I have here is just for the bridge, everything in Division C, but that's Alfie from April County.
Okay.
Ways through town. So that's all combined, but the little printout is just your funds.
Okay.
So if we, I was gonna say it's more than likely by the time we get engineering done and get the right way and stuff, fiscal year seventeen, Randy, on the big bridge.
So we're looking at nineteen to finish the whole project? If you're lucky.
In fiscal year sixteen, it's got the bridge. Two oh three, Randy, that's one of yours over Eagle Chief.
Okay.
Seventeen, we have the bridge south of Tacoma. And the two bridges on... And this plan ain't gonna be right from where we changed.
Changed, yes.
Yeah, it's all changed. So David will have to go back and change the year to fix all this. So I think it was in eighteen? We had it one time for seven miles of road and three bridges, but we're running into money difficulties on it, so that's all gonna change. It's part of it will be built during seventeen, and the, I'm thinking in two thousand nineteen we'll have the balance of it. But that all depends on John's decision, what he wants to do on, on Craig Road headed toward Tacoma.
With the, with rusted out ten horn OCN or on seventeen or nineteen?
On two thousand nineteen. Oh, on the left-hand column, or are you on the number two five, three seven five?
Two five, four, five, nine? Four, five, seven, yeah, I'm on that.
Okay. The one that says rusted out ten horn?
Mm-huh.
That was west of two eighty-one.
Okay.
And so we've already...
Addressed that.
Been built the bridge, and the C and D funded that bridge, and then we're overrunning asphalt quantities to get to two eighty-one, so that, that part will come, go away.
Okay.
So you're still looking at, on Craig Road headed toward Tacoma to tie into the...
Six mile.
Yeah, we're still looking at around a five million dollar project. We had right of way troubles at that area, so we went back and redesigned the wing walls. ODOT had a real expansive wing wall design, so we went back and redesigned wing walls.
Brought that in.
Shortened the right of way up, but we're still gonna have to have some temporary right of way there, and a little bit of permanent in two areas. So that, uh, when that project on three seventy is funded, kind of depends if you wanna proceed on with this one. I know we got, uh, I think three small bridges that need addressed.
On that, yeah.
On that stretch. And there's still cross ground and stuff that need to be fixed, but...
We got enough stuff to worry about till then, though, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's...
This is three seventy?
Yeah, that's. And, uh, that, it was in the plan to do, this was actually the first project, and we had right of way, so we did the one going west.
Yeah.
Had right of way trouble, so we did that one. So that one, moved that one back, so it's the point for you guys, if you wanna do three seventy, before you do the Tacoma stretch. Tacoma stretch is pretty good, three seventy is the best.
Yeah, well, safety.
It's, yeah, and, uh, it ain't like the Tacoma deal's gonna...
No. I mean, three seventy, no. That's a no-brainer.
Okay.
To me, anyway.
So we can, uh, I can change that, I'll call in to get a resol, I'll do, get some paperwork and see what ODOT wants to say, if they want you to do a resolution saying move three seventy in front of the Tacoma stretch, and I'll, but I'll check again.
That, Donnie, I know you told me and I missed, that, in two seventeen, that, that first item, that north south two thirty, that bridge, that's up there on the, on the core road, that's them two bridges up there, right?
Yeah, that's up there, so we're still...
Well, you got, I, I guess where I got confused is that District Number Three, or D Number Three. Two seventeen, year two seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, yes, that should be District Number Two. That one's still on, that's still on track.
That's still on for the seventeen, and then eighteen doing the Freedom Blacktop?
I think eighteen...
That's all, it's on eighteen, right?
Eighteen, we're engineering phase two of the Freedom Blacktop. We already started engineering phase one.
Okay.
So it'll be engineering phase two.
So that doesn't mean it happens then?
No, that just starts engineering.
Okay.
The, uh, I think the Freedom Blacktop is actually point twenty-one.
Okay.
Phase of that for construction.
Okay.
And that starts at Freedom and ends up at Harbor fourteen and ten.
It's all the way through there, so...
All the way through, yeah.
Okay.
And it stretches until, to point point three, it says.
Okay.
And that's all depending on funding.
Right, okay.
And I guess you heard the speech from Randy last week?
Right.
The funding for this year.
Right.
So we can, uh, you guys, some point in time, we'll load up in the bidding, go look and stuff and see, but...
I'll do it.
That'll be good. And we'll, uh, get that engineering stuff started back within our sophomore period.
Yeah, good to go.
Then we'll get you plans for those two things.
What are you thinking on the plans?
When are we thinking?
Yeah.
Probably, I'm hoping about.
I'd like to get, we just started March, is why I'd like to get.
Survey done, so if we get them...
Now, we don't do, do, we need to do any right of way stuff on that?
No, you can do that within right, within right of way.
Okay.
It will be, uh, the right of way will have to be taken care of when we do the federal portion of it.
Okay.
It'll have to get right of way, when you're cutting the hills and stuff, yeah?
Okay.
But we'll, uh, on the plans, we'll get those, get those plans, uh, let's see, we'll give them to you by February fifteenth, you'll have to send out the bids for material. And I don't know the magic number yet, they're telling us, due to some audit stuff, they're saying fifty thousand, but they're saying that's public work statute, and so Randy is doing some research, and so far, I don't know if you have to send those out for bid, you can actually buy them off your six month bid at this point, but I'm thinking just send it out for bid.
You thinking that if it goes over the fifty thousand?
Well, there, there's three statutes, they're dictating the public work statute, and then there, I can't remember the other two ones, the title of sixty-nine, and that is, on a bridge, is a hundred and fifty thousand. So I'm thinking by the time we do the labor, if you do the labor off of your six month bid, buy the materials off of your others, you're gonna be over the one fifty, so it'll probably be safe to, to send the material out.
Send the bid.
And you have welding and trial driving on six month bid.
Yes.
Okay. So we got that, so probably send the materials out, but if it's, you probably can't open bids till mid-March. They gotta be quiet for now for three weeks.
It's gotta be in the paper, ten days prior to opening.
Yeah, it'd be...
Well, good luck on your determination of that, though, if that's for safe, fifteen to three weeks, until we get some clarification. Cause some have been written out for the ten days.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And some have, and some haven't, so...
Really?
And why would that be?
Different auditor, different opinion of how it reads.
Welcome to County House.
Yeah.
It's all the same, all the same auditor, though, isn't it?
It's all the same auditor, different auditors at the counties, they got different opinions, so just to be safe and sorry, fifteen days probably.
Yeah, okay, let's go with that.
Okay, well...
I don't want any screw-ups on a big project like that.
So in other words, the first of February, better, we better...
Well, no, mid-Fbruary, we're trying, we're trying to have your plans.
Okay.
In a month.
Okay.
We got to put it on the gym to wait for bids, but...
Okay.
You're looking at bid March.
Mid-March, before we can do anything.
Yeah, and then, I'll be looking mid-April for you to start. Cause it'll take them, whoever gets the bids have to order...
You'll have to know what we're bidding?
Yeah. And I'll just get you set plans.
So on a deal like that, you're saying, just to be safe, we ought to have fifteen days of...
Fifteen days, yeah.
Bid.
We probably get enough stuff clarified this year, we're trying to get clarified then legislative session, but you know, how would it go?
Yeah. Well, that won't happen till in May.
Yeah, so...
So... Okay.
So the first is, we could probably open would be, unless I get something started, would, if I get something in the paper this Friday, we get...
Yeah, but we, he's not gonna have that.
Okay, so probably earliest we could open would be the twenty-third of February?
We're not gonna have that.
He's only gonna have the plans till mid-Fbruary.
Second week of March. You probably can't open till second week of March.
Twenty ninth of March, okay.
I hope the weather's nasty enough, not that I want that, but we need some moisture band.
Yeah, well, when you get those bridges out, you need to crack it, you don't get it.
Get it real quick, man. Kind of bring the rain.
Then you're probably...
Yeah.
So that's, I'll get with, uh, John and David, go look at their stuff, see what they wanna do on their changes, and we can bring that back.
And then we need to approve. Okay.
You'll let me know when you put you on?
Yeah.
Make sure of it.
Probably, we'll try to do the plans and all that all at the same time.
Okay, all right.
The, uh, John, I talked to ODOT about all the reviews, and they said, whatever we're gonna use on three seventy, and if you have any other places, if you wanna get rid of some others, that you can sign a letter, saying that you're not gonna, Woods County's not gonna use those beams in a timely manner.
Yeah.
We can just strip them out to the other counties.
Okay.
But we'll go look at all your stuff and see what you got in mind. Other bridges, if you're gonna use those up.
Yeah. Yeah, I got a lot of bridges that's already fixed, to me, like...
Yes, and you're fortunate that you're in pretty, pretty good shape, all, actually all the Woods Counties in good shape compared to a lot of others.
That's good. Very good.
Yes.
Oh, that's on it. We're gonna make them say, anyway, we have to change.
That's good.
All right, I'll get you the gym, my leg, I can roll it around, see if...
Thank you, Donnie. Thanks, Donnie.
Go take care, everybody.
Okay. Number twenty-one, approval, disapproval, blanket purchase orders. Make a motion to approve the blanket purchase order. I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn, recess, or reconvene.
I so move.
I hope it's to adjourn. I'll second. On favor?
Aye.